Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call to order the Coventry zoning board to review. And if the secretary please take a roll.
Bob Crowe.
Yeah.
Denise DeGrade?
Yeah.
Keith Cludier?
Here.
Russ Lockley?
Here.
Ed Ionati?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a full board, right? One, two, three, four, five. I'm counting right. Yeah, okay. So we get Keith. Denise.
Am I missing somebody?
Yeah, we are missing Lenny.
Yeah, just Lenny, well, and Jenny. So yeah, we're good to go.
Well, we're good to go. That's what I'm doing. I'm checking now. So you have Keith, Denise, Russ, Ed, and Bob Crowe. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. Okay. So we have enough members to conduct business. All right, I'd like to have a motion to accept the February 3rd, 2021 minutes of the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, so moved by Keith and seconded Russ. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, can I just make it an, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, nays, any nays? Okay. Minutes of the meeting have passed. Okay, now go ahead, Kerry.
I'm, I'm sorry about that. If anybody is here for the Kat and Zaro Anderson Zero Providence Place application, the applicant has withdrawn his application. It's no further, there will be no further hearings on the matter.
That's what I understood also. So he's withdrawing that application. So if anybody's here for that application, that application has been withdrawn, so it will not be heard tonight. Okay, going back to old business, let's see now. No, we need a ratification, I'm sorry, for Joseph Shaw. That is assessment plot map 316, lot 84, address is 4186 Flat River Road.
Lot 85, Bob. Lot 85.
Oh, lot 85, correct, you're correct, I'm sorry. Applicant seeking a special use manor, dimensional manor to construct a 576 square foot garage. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we ratify that decision.
Okay, motion made by Denise, seconded by Keith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nays, ayes have it. Okay. So that takes care of ratification of Joseph Shaw. The next old business we have is Dale Anderson, is the owner. Oh, this is that one we just, they...
Yeah, he withdrew one.
Yeah, it's withdrawn.
That's been withdrawn, okay. New business, okay. Secretary, please read into record the new business.
The owner applicant is Christine D'Amber. The location is AP 74, lot 005, 333 Reed Schoolhouse Road. Zone is RR2. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and a special use permit to construct a 20 by 5 farmer's porch on the front of the single-family dwelling. The porch will be 23 feet from the property line with 45 feet is required.
Okay, on this here application, all right, do I have the applicant here?
Hi, I'm here.
All right, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. First of all, give me a full name and address.
Christine D'Amber, 333 Reed Schoolhouse Road, Coventry.
Thank you. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And you have anybody else that's gonna give testimony?
No.
No, okay. Please explain to me what you'd like to do.
So we're in the process of finalizing an addition that we're putting on. I don't know if you remember, back in September, we came to zoning and we received variance relief to add the addition to the house, which was granted. We decided that we might want to add a farmer's porch to the front of the addition. So because we hadn't, we hadn't requested that additional five feet, originally we would need the extra five feet of frontage relief to do that.
Okay, so at this time here, you'd like to have a dimensional variance to add on five feet. I don't believe, as it's been written up by the administration, that it's, the request is not unreasonable. And I think it'd be very desirable. And also, it's, it's, doesn't result of any, your prior actions, it's desired for curfew. Not by financial gain. The granting of this variance will not alter the general character of surroundings. I believe it'll fit in the surroundings. Location of the porch appears to be reasonable. Will not appear to be, impair the use of the budding residential property. Results over, of, not make a results of overdeveloping. Let's see, what else we have here? If the owner was not granted the dimensional variance, it would create a greater hardship more than a mere inconvenience. I don't, I don't see any other location we'd put this. So at this time here, I'd like to open it up to the rest of the board. Keith, how do you feel about it?
I agree with you, Bob. I don't think it's unreasonable, and I have no problem with it.
Okay, and how about you, Russ?
I think it's fine. I think it'll look nice. It's right there on the corner. It's, I mean, the addition to the house makes it real, look, was gonna make it look even nicer, but the farmer's porch, I mean, it's just, it just heightens everything on it. It, I'm very much in favor of it.
You said it better than I could, you're right. Okay, Denise, what's your opinion on this?
Yeah, I agree with Russ. I think it's gonna be a nice addition to the whole home.
Okay, Ed?
I feel the same way, Bob. Be very attractive once the farmer's porch is on the front there.
Okay, so that takes care of the dimensional variance. This time here, we got to take a look at the special use permit. All right. Okay, there is egress to the property, coming and going. There is availability of all-street parking. I don't see that to be a problem. Of course, there's adequate trash that's developed, that's rather, you know, existing there. We're not changing utilities. There is no requirement for further screening or buffering necessarily. No signs or lights. The open yard spaces there, they will remain unchanged. Compatibility, lot size, as being a residential use is compatible with neighbor, neighboring properties. And this is compatible with a comprehensive plan. The proposed expense, proposed expansion is generally compatible with a comprehensive plan. And granting this will not be a not performing use would be, would not create conditions that are economical or public health and safety or morals to the area. Also, we have a staff approval on this here, and the project appears to be good. It seems to be a good project. So I, I don't have anything further. Let's see if I'll go through the rest of the board. Ed, how do you feel on this?
I don't see any problem with it at all, Bob.
Okay, that's with the dimensional. Okay, and Denise?
I don't see any problems with it, Bob.
Okay, Russ?
I'm good with it.
Okay, Keith?
I'm okay.
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to see if there's anybody that would like to speak on this application, for, against, or just have a question on it. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Okay, Ed, do we have any hands out there or anything?
It's not, yeah, you gotta, I think John's handling it.
So Ed isn't here, but Cody from IT is here helping us tonight. I don't have the ability to bring anybody in, but he can, and one person is raising their hand.
This one person, they've had their hand up for a while. I don't know if it's about this, but I can let them speak if you want.
Okay, please.
Mr. Mason, you have the ability to speak if you want. You have to unmute though.
Mr. Mason, Mr. Mason, you're muted?
I have no, no questions at all regarding that. I just wanted to sit on the, and see what the meeting was tonight. I was concerned about a property that, I guess, the variance has been changed, and he's not looking for the best by failure. Still sit and watch the meeting.
Okay. All right, so you have, you have no questions or anything on this application at this time?
Not, none at all.
Okay, I thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we vote on this application tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion's made, seconded that we vote on this application tonight, as long as we don't have anybody else that would like to speak on this application. Again, John, is there anybody out there that would like to speak on this application?
There is nobody else with their hands up at this time.
Okay. I am gonna do a roll call vote on how you vote on this application. Keith, how do you vote on this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, are we doing, which one are we doing?
I'm sorry, we're gonna put a roll call vote on, voting on this tonight, at this time here. Keith, how do you vote on voting on this tonight?
I want to vote on this tonight.
Okay, Denise?
Approved for tonight.
You approved, you made, okay, Russ?
Vote tonight.
Vote tonight. Ed?
Vote tonight.
I also vote and second it, vote tonight. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call on the actual vote of the application of, you know, Christine D'Amber for the, let's do the dimensional variance first. Okay. Keith, how do you vote on dimensional variance? You vote to approve that as presented?
Approve as presented, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Denise?
Approve as presented.
Okay, Russ?
Approve as presented.
Ed?
Prove as presented.
I also approve as presented. Okay, at this time here, I'd like to do a roll call vote on the special use permit. At this time here, Keith, how would you vote on the special use permit for this application?
Approve.
Approved, okay. Denise?
Approve as presented.
Okay, Russ?
Prove.
Okay, Ed?
Prove.
Okay, chair also approves. So the special use permit and the dimensional variance is approved as presented. Okay, the next one we have, we're gonna have it read into the record.
Sorry, I started reading it into the record. So the next owner applicant is Sunset 10 in sign. Owner is Merrill J. Anderson Jr. Location is AP 22, lots 34 and 35, 928 Main Street. Zone is general business. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to construct an 80 by 60 prefab building. The applicant is seeking relief for off-street loading space requirement, parking spaces, lot coverage, and reduction in landscape buffering by installation of a fence.
Okay. Is the applicant here, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Masori, the applicant from Sunset 10 is also here with me, as well as Pat Walker, the site engineer. I'll be making the presentation, though, Mr. Chairman, so if you'd prefer to swear me in before I proceed.
I'd like to swear you in, and also at this time here, the applicant and Mrs. Walker.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you all to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Do.
Okay, Bill, please give you a full name and address.
William Masori, 947 Greenville Avenue in Greenville, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mrs. Walker?
Patricia Walker, President, Walker Engineering Limited, 31 Vale Court, West Greenwich, Rhode Island, 02817.
Okay. Taking a look at this, and I spent quite a bit of time over there. It looks like a good application. I'm gonna let you, Mr. Cronin, re, submit the application to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. This is a site that doesn't require a sidewalk. Everyone in town knows where this is. It's the asphalt parking lot behind the former Merrill Motors at the junction of Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street. And ironically, the most visible landmark is Sunset 10, located directly across the street from that intersection. That's where they currently rent and operate out of their Coventry location. So the proposal is to move that operation across the street to lots 34 and 35, and move some business from Cranston as well to this consolidated Coventry location. The lot itself, once combined, will be boarded by Ocean State Aquatics located on Sandy Bottom Road. Sandy Bottom Road itself, Main Street, Whipple Court, and is a residential use of home along the southern boundary of the property. The plan, as mentioned, is to combine the two lots, 34 and 35, each about 10,000 square feet and a little change, into one lot, 21,000 square feet in the general business zone. We're gonna construct an 80 by 60-foot, single-story building, a steel building. The front of the building will face Main Street and have a a kind of residential, not really residential, more of a retail look to it with a front door and some windows. And the garage doors associated with the building will be face, facing along the side and in the rear of the property, so that the front of the property will remain attractive and approachable. Although the front of the building is on Main Street, the actual main entrance to the building will be on Whipple Court. It's far away from the intersection with Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street at that light, as we could move it. The design of the building is pretty unusual, and it's kind of what leads us here today. The, the building as, as the steel building company and Ms. Walker have designed it as a drive-through building. This solved a few problems for us logistically about how to move around the site. And I think it resulted in an excellent compromise in design for the neighborhood. So the proposed combines lots, the single 21,000 square foot lot with the 80 by 60 building, are gonna meet all the dimensional and setback requirements of the general business zone. In other words, it fits okay on the lot. It does have public water. We do have to use an OWTS system. That OWTS system will be placed in front of the building, near the intersection of Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street, and provide a little landscape area as well, a little buffer from Main Street and Sandy Bottom Road. The, despite the fact that it fits in the dimensional setback requirements, we do need three variances from this board. There are off-street loading, lot coverage, and landscape buffer. With regard to off-street loading, I've already alluded to the drive-through nature of the building. The Coventry zoning ordinance requires one off-street loading space for each commercial use. But because the building is a drive-through in nature, and the deliveries, trucks, and really the customers as well be driving into the building, there's no use for a loading space. And, and in effect, it'll interfere or burden the design of the building. With regard to lot coverage, we're proposing a substantial improvement to the site. When you drive by there, as you're driving through town, you see that this is an asphalt parking lot with a small area, a crushed stone parking lot toward the rear. It's nearly 100% covered. It's about 81% covered by the DEM definition of lot coverage. We propose to reduce that amount to about 74.75, so 74 and 3/4%, even with the installation of the building will actually, will result in a reduction in the amount of impervious service on the site. And it's a similar story with the landscape buffer. So we have two landscape buffer requirements that we're dealing with at the site. The first one is the zoning ordinance requires 20 feet of landscape buffer between a commercial use and a residential use, such as the one on the southern side of this property. Currently, the asphalt and crushed stone run right up to a fence. There's no buffer at all, zero. We're proposing 10 feet of landscape buffer at that rear line, and to maintain the fence, so six-foot, six-foot solid privacy fence across the rear boundary, and we're gonna add 10 feet of landscape buffer. We still need 10 feet of relief from the ordinance. The second landscape buffer issue is that between commercial uses, the zoning ordinance calls for 10 feet of landscape buffer. We are proposing 5.5 feet of landscape buffer in the, along the boundary between Ocean State Aquarium and the new Sunset 10. In addition to the 5.5 feet of landscape buffer, we're proposing a split-rail fence to give it a little three-dimensional aspect and to delineate the property line visually. It looks like it'll be visually appealing. We've included a pretty substantial landscape plan in with our plan set. The landscape plan shows that we're, we're considering installing landscape all around the perimeter of the building, so on the Main Street side, Sandy Bottom Road, Whipple Court, as well as to the rear, as I just described. So we appeared before planning on January 27th, 2021, for pre-application, and made a presentation there, and we will have to return to planning for building development review, which we'll do once we can secure the variances from the zoning board. One issue that has been clarified as we've gone through this process is that initially, we had requested a variance for a reduction in the number of parking spaces from 16 to 13 on this site. We had proposed that to the planning board. They had advised us that we should address the zoning board with that issue, and recently, the staff of the planning and zoning department has realigned that matter to be heard by the planning board at development plan review. So that issue, although it is in my application, is not before that board tonight. So Ms. Walker, who came up with a good idea of the drive-through building, and Mr. Masori, who's the proposed owner of this site, are here with me if you have any questions about the application. But those are the three variances we're seeking: lot coverage, landscape buffer, and off-street loading. I thank the board.
Okay. Would Ms. Walker like to add anything to this?
I'm here for any questions. The biggest thing is, you know, as Mr. Cronin noted, the loading space, based on the type of business, they don't get the type of deliveries from a tractor-trailer, which would warrant the need for a loading space. If anything, they get like the UPS, the box truck deliveries, related to the landscape buffers. Because of the circulation that's required, we tried to maximize and provide what we could. But as Mr. Cronin noted also, and it kind of is in conjunction with the lot coverage, right now, the entire, both lots are, for the most part, all asphalt. So we are improving the conditions that abut the different properties, as well as Whipple Court and that crushed stone area that's located in the southeast corner of the lot near Whipple. By DEM standards, actually is considered impervious also. So by the town standards, not, but by DEM standards, it is considered impervious. We will be decreasing the amount of impervious surface coverage. We have the enclosed dumpster area that's required. And the landscaping around the building has been designed in accordance with the town requirements.
Okay. All right, any questions from any board members?
Bobby, I have a question. Mr. Cronin, you had said in the landscape plan that you were considering, you know, the planting of trees, and it looks like evergreen shrubs around the perimeter of the property. You said you were considering it, but not that you were going to actually do it. So is it, is it going to be done according to the plan that we're looking at?
Well, that is the proposal that we have submitted to planning, Mr. Gray. They have the ultimate say on the landscape plan. But those are our intentions, those are our plans.
Okay.
That's, they have, they have the ultimate say as to the types of, the types of plantings, the height and density of the plantings. But that, that is in fact our proposal. So yes, we're going to install that, yeah.
Okay, so yes, you are, you are planning with their approval to install the buffering and the plantings that I see on this plan.
That's well said. I wish I had said it that way, yes.
I've got a question. There's, there's, there's no sewers there, huh? You can't connect?
No.
No, the store is over in this area. They pretty much terminate on Sandy Bottom Road at the pump station. And then after that, they go through the parking area where the Monahan's property is, and go up through the Coventry Credit.
Okay.
So there isn't, this is like that gray zone from pretty much the pump station, 116. And I think it has to do with the railroad bridge that's there. They couldn't get the clearance when they were installing it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from any members of the board? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public and see if there's anybody who would like to speak and have a question on the application, or just have a question about the application. Anybody out there?
Yes, there is one person, and Alex Polon?
Yes, that's me.
Alex, can I see you out there?
I clicked the Zoom link, and it's allowing me to be in, I guess, seminar mode, and I can't enable my camera, but I can enable my speaking. I'm not sure if there's a way that this, whoever's controlling the seminar could enable camera mode, perhaps?
At this time, attendance cannot have video, because it's a webinar, not a official Zoom. In the future, we can set it up the other way, if we, if you want to see them on video.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to swear the person in. I will swear you in at this time, just verbally. Will you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Please give me a full name and address.
Alexander Pollan at 10 Whipple Court, Coventry, Rhode Island, 02816.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, what are your questions or concerns, please?
Yes, so I guess I'd like to start with a question from Mr. Cronin. You spoke in, in your...
Okay, you gotta direct it to the board.
I'm sorry, I, I'm new at this. I guess my question for the board is these, I was concerned about these proposed garage doors on the building itself. I'm not sure, this drive-through style of the building, I'm not sure how that would work in that, in the location where they're proposing to build the building.
Mr. Crowe, may I respond?
Please.
All right, so I apologize, Mr. Pollan. I'm not exactly sure which house or property is 10 Whipple Court. which house or uh property is ten Whipple Court. But if you looked um at the building from Whipple Court, uh there's a there's a cut cut out in the uh curb there where uh the entrance will be. And on that side of the building will be a garage door. And then straight across from that door uh will be uh on the opposite side of building, another uh similar garage door. So that the uh direction of the vehicles uh will not have to change, you'll be able to pull through the building. And that'll uh allow for greater efficiency inside of the building. Um then they would uh go around the building and exit again on Whipple Court. So uh one garage door would be uh facing Whipple Court and one garage door would be facing uh Sandy Bottom Road with in terms of the drive-through aspect of the building.
Perfect, okay, thank you for answering my question. Uh am I allowed to speak about the uh review or about the might a big public comment, I guess is the correct word?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh so as I as a resident of ten Whipple Court, I just uh am not totally satisfied with this application. Uh I don't believe that this will allow for a sufficient room for travel along Whipple Court to get onto Main Street. I believe also that yeah, the flow of traffic will be impeded by any potential storage of vehicles on the property by the business. And also that any unnecessary uh traffic turning around uh could damage property or landscape, and that's all.
Okay, no, that's some good points uh you brought up. Uh I'm gonna let uh Mr. Cronin or have his engineer answer the if there's a possible traffic flow problem, uh I believe the individual is concerned on Whipple Court.
So
Correct.
Yeah, so that the um the proposed main entrance is as close to Main Street uh as the uh zoning ordinance and uh subdivision regulations uh would allow. So uh there is a substantial uh right-of-way along uh Route one seventeen. So it it might look like it's a little further away from one seventeen than one would anticipate. But that is not uh an area where we can uh construct or use the land. And as a result, we also can't use it um as an entrance or exit to this property. And that kind it does kind of uh push the entrance back uh down towards uh sou- southerly along Whipple Court um a little bit, uh but the uh entrance is as close to Main Street as we were able to place it.
Um is it possible, Bob, for John to um put the site map up so that Mr. uh Pollan can see what it is that Mr. Cronin is referring to?
Could you do that, John?
Um at this time, I don't have the ability to screen share, Cody, is that a possibility?
Yeah, you're all set, John.
Okay. Can you all see that?
Okay, that's good.
That's good.
All right, so Mr. Pollan, can you see the 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 map here?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. So the entrance on Whipple Court um is about well, as Mr. Cronin said, it's as close to Main Street as they could get it. Um and they would pull in and then drive right into the building and drive right out of the building and come around to the building and then back out on Whipple Court. You see that?
Yes, thank you for uh clarifying that, this is very helpful.
Okay.
So Ms. degraded, in addition, uh the customer parking um for which is another item that Mr. Pollan had uh mentioned is along the uh Main Street uh boundary, the northern boundary of this lot. So the cars would pull in uh from Main Street onto Whipple Court, take a right into the property and the in the customer uh parking is along that Main Street um boundary, the northern boundary of the property.
Yeah, I can see the parking spaces delineated there.
Keep keeping the activity um as as close to that Main Street um as is possible.
Now, there is going to be no parking on Whipple Court, correct?
There is no parking on uh Whipple Court. I mean, I guess for the background of the board, we had a much uh wider uh opening on Whipple Court and Mr. Crossman and the planning staff uh quickly restricted that uh to the plan that you hear, uh which is uh as uh much separation from our uh parking and travel lanes uh from Whipple Court as is as is allowed by the uh travel re- regulation, so um it it, you know, frankly, would have been easier for us if that island uh uh was not there, but uh that's uh what the planning staff I wanted to see, so we inserted that island to to create further separation uh from Whipple Court.
Okay.
John, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Um the only thing that I would like to add, um you know, the the building meets all the the setback requirements. Um and um so it's good in that respect. The relief that was requested, um every single item, except for maybe the loading space requirement, is an improvement on the current site. So I would say that it's an improvement and um as you can see in the report, the planning staff gave um this project a favorable recommendation.
Okay, did the uh neighbor have any other questions?
Uh no, thank you.
Okay. So you were you 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 were okay with the presentation of the way they're gonna drive right in and then drive right out? Okay?
Yes, just wanted to emphasize since Whipple Court is a dead-end street to try to prohibit uh any, you know, turnarounds as much as possible and also to ensure that there will be no parking on Whipple Court itself, since it is a tight street.
Okay. No, I don't believe they're proposing any parking at all along there and plus that I think they concerned with the way uh they're keeping the traffic under control by doing a straight drive-through and drive out. When I went over there and took a look at it, uh I was kinda surprised as Ed brought up that they weren't hooking up the sewers, but as uh Ms. Walker pointed out, I guess they really can't. And they're gonna put in a old old W T S system. And uh the uh they're gonna first install a ten-by-fifty construction access. I'm looking, what is that, stone there, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, that's just the typical for um, you know, when the trucks come in and out, it's more to clean up the tires and stuff as they're dumping or whatever the materials um before they go out onto the roadway and then it goes away. It's just a temporary type of thing, similar to the concrete truck washout. As the truck comes in, they would utilize that area as a washout for the concrete truck before it exits the site. It's more of a a cleaning and then those go away.
Okay.
Actually, that plan that John put up probably is not the best one, it should probably should have been one or two before that, John, or that might be a better one. Those are just standard erosion controls, similar to the um, you know, the hay bales and silk fence and the or the compost socks or the straw straw waddles that are needed to come, you know, contain the site while it's being constructed.
Okay, now on the, I believe the sign is gonna go up in the, as he's looking at it, I'm saying the right-hand corner, I guess it'd actually be the left-hand as you're facing the
Going up in the northwest corner, um we provided those, that would be a uh um a freestanding sign, and then there would be a sign on the building itself.
Okay, the uh what's that gonna be, all landscaped over there in that area with a
For the most part, you can see that in that little jogged area between the parking spaces and the drive going around to the side. Um that would be where the septic system would be going, so we cannot put by the D E M rules any trees or landscaping within ten feet. I mean, I'm sorry, trees and shrubs, so it would be, you know, grassed or you can put like uh perennials or whatever. I don't think Diane had shown any, um but those those shrubs and trees are outside of the ten-foot area.
Bobby, as far as that sign goes on the corner there, that's not gonna be an animated sign, correct?
No.
Okay.
All right, and then you have on the opposite corner, right up in front, you have a, I guess, a landscaped area, that that round circular area.
On the northeast corner?
Yes.
At Whipple Court, yes. If you note, there is a, there's that existing island that is out there, that is state property. Um so that's beyond, and actually, there are bollards that are out there, those bollards are not on our property.
Okay.
So those are beyond our our um touch, shall we say? Um so we do have the landscape buffer showing, you know, it would be buffered on the side as well as in the front area. But that island that is um that is, you know, to the north, is not part of our property, so we can't, we can't do anything with that.
All right, now, uh John, that's uh wh- what is that, is that grass, pavement, what is that?
That island area, if I can interject, I'm sorry, it's kind of, it's kind of like, it looks like it was crushed stone at some point, now it has kind of weeds growing through.
Right, now, actually, what, nobody really maintains that, right?
Correct.
Would the applicant be able to maintain it so that he can have a uh, you know, a present view of his, you know, he's gonna put a big investment into the property, would that be something he can maintain?
I wouldn't uh have the applicant uh respond in the positive to that, Bob, during a public meeting uh as the state may not agree with his approach.
Okay, I thought about that.
There's a possibility the state might allow him to do it, but you gotta, there's a lot of locality to it, because I have the island at the end of that street, at the end of Sandy Bottom, which I take care of.
Right.
But it's state property and I have to sign all these releases and I have to have insurance on the people that go work on it. So I don't think it's a point where he can just go and do it. I think if he if he wants to go that route, you have to, you know, contact the state on that deal.
He should go down the street and see you, Ed, that's what he should do.
That through the adapt-a-spot program, Ed?
Yes, exactly. And I actually, if he if he wants to try, you know, contacting him, I got the information, because uh it's Steve, uh I forgot his last name, but I got his number. It's no no big deal, but you have to sign forms and stuff and so I think, is is this the spot, Bobby, where is it, it's a long Main Street where all that crushed stone is, that right-of-way thing, is that what he's talking about?
Yeah, well, it's kinda like where the, I guess, the button, the poles are, I guess.
That you're coming off of Sandy Bottom, taking a right
Yeah.
Before you can turn right onto Whipple Court, it's that area.
That area, crushed, it's like crushed stone, yeah, I was I was I was on it the other day, yeah, okay. I mean, there's a possibility, right now, it's not overgrown, so I don't think it's it's looking too bad, but eventually, who knows? So that's just a thought, if he ever wants to get to that point, he can get
Okay, is there anybody else would like to speak on this application?
There's uh currently nobody with their hand raised.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, can we vote on this tonight?
Uh I'd like to have a motion to do that at this time, if you'd like to make. Okay, Russ has made the motion, do I have a second on it?
Second.
Okay, motion's made that we voted on it tonight, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this here to that we vote on this tonight and Keith, how do you vote on this? To to vote on it tonight?
I say we vote on it tonight.
Okay, Russ?
Yes, tonight.
Denise?
Yes, uh approve for tonight.
Okay, and Ed?
Yeah, I'd like to vote on it this evening.
And I also approve to vote on it for this evening, very familiar. I spent some time over there, I think it was either, it might have been Sat- Sunday, walking around and uh I was concerned with the neighbors in the back. But it it seems like the applicant has tried to address that, apparently the board administration has also looked at it. And uh I didn't have no other input at this time. Okay, um I'd also like to ha- I'd like to have a a motion made for voting on this application tonight.
We did that.
To vote on it, really.
We did that.
Uh that's to vote on it tonight, but I'd like to have a vote.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You're gonna make the motion with uh to vote on this application, Denise?
Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Russ. Okay, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it, okay, so we're gonna vote on it now and okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Keith Clute, how do you vote on this uh application?
Approve.
Okay, Russ, how do you vote on this application?
Approve as presented.
Okay, uh Denise?
Approve as presented.
Okay, Ed, approve as presented. Okay, let the record reflect that four members of the board have voted to approve as a let as presented. I, the chair, also vote to approve, making it a fifth member. But I'd also like to point out at this time here that my son owns the property next to it. So because we're lacking members, I would normally not vote on this. But uh and I have no financial interest in what my I'm sorry. Who's speaking, please?
I think that was Jane.
Jane?
No, that is not me.
Oh.
Okay.
So Bob, you feel you don't have a conflict and you can vote on this?
That's correct. Okay, but I, you know, just wanted to point it out to the record.
All right, well, we thank the board and uh thank you for time and your consideration.
Okay, application is passed as presented.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay. Carrie, do you have anything else you wanna add for tonight's meeting?
Uh I do not, Mr. Chair, I just need a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, do I have a motion on a floor to adjourn?
So moved.
Ethan and Ru- and Ed rather, I believe. Keith made it, Russ, uh I mean, uh Ed seconded.
That was Russ, Russ and Keith.
Oh, Russ and Keith, okay.
Yeah, because I don't wanna go, I like it, we're having a good
You're just like looking at my bowl.
Exactly.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh just one point I need to make.
I need to take a vote on this, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it, okay, go ahead, Carrie.
Um if anybody else cannot make it to next month, please let me know ahead of time. Um because if I'm down two, I'll need everybody to be there in order to have a meeting.
I'm good.
Well, I'll I'll double-check closer to the meeting, but I'm just giving you all the heads up, so.
All right, thank you all for coming tonight.
Good night.
See ya.
Good night.
Okay.
Bye.